We had some technical difficulties, so we extended the time to start this to allow our technic person to try and fix that. So today is February 22nd. This is the Charlottesville City School Board meeting. The meeting agenda and all supporting documents can be found on the board's electronic school board website. And then just reminders to public that you can email us and reach out to us via Facebook or via our email site. So right now, if I could ask everybody to join us in a moment of silence, please. All right, and if I could ask clerk, please to call world.
Yes, Madam Chair, Mr. Bryant.
Present.
Bryson Morrisburger.
Present.
Dr. Craft.
Present.
Ms. McHeever.
Here.
Ms. Perrier.
Present.
Ms. Torres.
Yes.
Mr. Wade.
Yes.
And our student rep, Mr. Johnson.
Present.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. And yes, I wanted to welcome Mr. Johnson, who's our incoming student board rep. So thank you for joining us today. Appreciate it. Now I'd like to call for the approval of the agenda.
Madam Chair, I approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? Madam Clerk, if you would call for vote, please.
Yes, Madam Chair, Mr. Bryant.
Yes.
Ms. Bryson Morrisburger.
Yes.
Dr. Craft.
Yes.
Ms. McHeever.
Yes.
Ms. Perrier.
Yes.
Ms. Torres.
Yes.
Mr. Wade.
Yes.
Thank you. Now we'll move on to comments from members of the community. As a reminder, you can raise your hand in the Zoom. There were several people that signed up beforehand, so Mr. Como will announce one or two at a time to kind of put the next person in the queue. We do ask that you share your name and address, and there is a three-minute limit with your comments.
Okay, and I have the user listed here is Kenneth Martin. And Kenneth, you should be able to unmute yourself at this time.
Good evening, I'm Kenneth Martin, 1120 Mill Park Drive Extended, 22901. A significant number of our students have not had in-person instruction for about a year. It is reasonable to believe many have suffered a loss of academic advancement during this time. After returning to traditional instructional modes, models, the teachers of the students in the upper grades will have to restructure their curricula around their students' deficiencies. However, the students in the primary grades will need a more rigorous course of study, particularly in the areas of reading, writing, and arithmetic, which serve as the foundation for their future courses of study. Successful achievement in these core areas will have a great bearing upon their course of study in high school and their post-secondary choices in attaining adult self-sufficiency. Prior to this meeting Friday evening, last Friday evening, I sent to you an email titled, "A Case for Professional Tutoring." As you look at the overall focus of the budget for 2021-22, I hope you will take into consideration my comments concerning the importance of setting up a special reading-for-comprehension program for those who have been identified as consistently reading below grade level. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Martin.
And we have listed user Sarah, and the last name is listed as M Y H R E.
Yes, Sarah Myrie, 1520 Westwood Road. This afternoon, this afternoon, I am begging you to please allow all high school students who want to participate in in-person learning to return to CHS. Athletes are being allowed to participate in indoor and outdoor in-person sports, and struggling students are also being scheduled to be in-person at invitation. I'm not sure how many hundreds of your students fall outside of those two categories, but despite depression and a lack of learning and motivation for both of my children, they apparently do not fall in these buckets. I'm floored and quite frankly astounded by the fact that all of our teachers, administrators, and staff have been put at the front of the line for vaccination, and yet there is no plan or communication to families about a goal or desire to bring all students back to CHS. In fact, it's hard to tell if there is even a push or desire on the part of the school to resume in-person classes this fall. The silence is deafening, disheartening, and watching my kids sit on their beds day after day looking at black boxes on a screen instead of their peers due to the camera-off culture being promoted by CCS is nothing more than a daily reminder of the complete failure by CCS to educate our kids. There has been zero communication to families since February 5th on what a plan for the majority of your students might be for the rest of the year. That's more than two weeks. Why is this not a burning priority being discussed and communicated weekly, if not daily? Every day our children are not in school is a day they fall further and further behind. With the new schedule of hybrid for some, I mean nothing short of a panic that now our kids will not even have access to office hours, which for calculus already includes long lines for assistance. And teachers will be asked to splinter even further between struggling kids and the rest. This leaves the rest with even fewer resources and less instruction than has been available for more than 325 calendar days from CCS. How is this equitable? There is no discussion of summer programs, tutoring, an extended school year, or an early start to next year, as is being discussed by the governor for Virginia Public Schools, unless again, these services will only be available for a select few, and therefore my kids are once again not eligible. At a minimum, I would like you to stop referring to the successful online learning model. It is an insult to the thousands of CCS parents and kids who are struggling with a horrible situation that the schools refuse to acknowledge or even try to address for the majority of families. I stood on the bridge over 250 last year and begged our community to fund our schools. I am now begging you to open our schools, not just to a select few, but to all students.
Thank you, Ms. Meyer.
I'm looking to see, there are nobody else at this time in the chat, and I see no additional hands raised. Let's see here, oh, we do have another hand raised. Tim is the first name, W A L L A C E is the last name.
Hi, can you all hear me?
Yes, yes, thank you.
My name is Tim Wallace. I live on Shelby Drive in the city. I have two daughters in Charlottesville City Schools. I want to read to you two of the first sentences from the daily progress story from your last board meeting, which was on Thursday, February 5th. The Charlottesville Schools, the Charlottesville School Division said Friday that it will expand in-person classes to those in sixth grade and younger. The classes are set to start March 8th after the school board gave its final blessing to the division's plan Thursday night to provide in-person classes for preschoolers through second graders. Pardon my whiplash. Y'all passed a resolution approving the plan for pre-K through second grade on Thursday, and at the same time, you gave Dr. Atkins the authority to add more students as conditions changed. That was Thursday. The very next day, Dr. Atkins announced she was adding third, fourth, fifth, and sixth grades. My question is, what changed? On Thursday, the motion to add third and fourth grade couldn't even get a second. So did y'all know that was going to happen? Because it sure feels like that wasn't what you intended. I gave comment last summer in which I talked about the opportunity cost of asking our teachers and principals to plan for how to go back in person immediately, instead of focusing on making virtual instruction as good as it could be. I want to return to that theme. Instead of having a discussion months ago about under what conditions and in what ways and on what timelines a transition back to face-to-face should look, you focused more on what information you didn't have and asked the division to formulate over and over and over again different plans for going back. Each time they've gone through that exercise has been grueling work that is being done on top of trying to manage and teach through a pandemic. The disregard that shows for the time and energy and expertise of your teachers and administrators is galling, but it's actually not the most galling thing. The most galling thing is that you decided to bring students back before all of your employees are fully vaccinated and protected by that vaccine, especially when you could have waited just a week or two. There's no excuse, none whatsoever. And now you've got teachers and administrators feeling pressure to work through the unpleasant side effects of the second dose of the vaccine in order to not further disrupt their students whose educational lives are being upheaved. That decision demonstrates a callous disregard for your employees, and I have to say, props to Ms. Bryson Morrisburger for voting against your plan on that basis. And finally, you owe it to the community to report on the demographics of which students are actually going back in person and who is opting to stay virtual. If Charlottesville is like other divisions in Virginia, then you'll find that your equity explanation falls short. Don't rely on the survey from November, especially after a parent publicly chastised y'all for forcing her to lie on the survey to game the system. We can't, we parents can't get that data, but you can, and you should, and you should commit to making it public at the next school board meeting. The data should include race, eligibility for free launch, ELL, grade level, and SPED. Thank you for listening.
Madam Chair, at this time, there are no more hands. I know we typically give a waiting period.
I was profound there, just so you all know. I wanted to remind everybody that there is another opportunity for comments from members of the community towards the end of the meeting. At this point, I think we will move into public comment specifically for the 2021-2022 budget, please. And a reminder, if you'd like to make comment, to raise your hand in the Zoom. Anybody, Mr. Como?
There's nobody, and just an update, we were, I was able to broadcast the meeting live off my page and bounce it to the Charlottesville City Schools page, so we are now on the Charlottesville City Schools page live.
Great, thank you. And a reminder to anybody, or not a reminder, but just to catch everybody else up, we did have some technical difficulties in the beginning, so we apologize for that as we tried to work through or find a workaround to get this streamed through Facebook Live. So we are just currently wrapping up our first opportunity for comments from members of the community and then public comment regarding the budget. And if there is nobody in the Zoom room, then I think we will move on at this point to our action item, which is approval of the 2021-2022 operating budget, and I would like to turn it over to Dr. Atkins, please.
Thank you, Ms. Torres, and good afternoon to board members. We'd like to start off our presentation this evening by responding to a request from the board to go back and take a look at the salary actions that we were recommending and to take into consideration any update that we have from the General Assembly and to try to, at the best that we could, move out our staff, our teachers, as far forward on the pay table as possible. So we'd like to present those changes to you as we present the budget to you for action. Ms. Powell.
Thank you, Dr. Atkins, Madam Chair, members of the board. This first chart is one you've seen many times, but for the public, the priorities are aware of what drove this budget development cycle. It's recruiting and retaining highly qualified teachers and staff, maintaining the continuity of high-quality instructional programs, and applying a lens of equity in all funding considerations as we work through this budget development process. Next slide, Leslie. So the update that we have for you is primarily driven by information coming out of the General Assembly. The House budget proposal has a recommendation for a 5% raise for all SOQ positions. I believe the Senate said a 3%, but the House said a 5%, and the governor is urging that the conference committee budget, which is basically the final word on the budget, the governor is urging that that include the 5% action that's recommended by the House. And so it's important to understand that if a 5% action is what ends up going through a conference, then if that makes it through, then what happens with these situations is that our state fund, the state funding will increase. Of course, it doesn't stay in step with what it costs to actually do that action, but the state funding increases, and then we have to certify that we have taken sufficient action to qualify for those funds. So that's part of the process anytime that there's money for raises included in the budgets that come out of Richmond. So what you see here is information about what it, what is the increase in cost to do a one step with a total of a 5% salary action. So it's basically a step plus a 3.75% raise, if you will, and the net increase for that above what was already in the budget proposal you've seen previously is $1,660,621. That's the number you see there at the bottom of the screen. This particular recommendation does advance the pay, the pay tables to be higher and more competitive for recruiting, which is, which is very important to us. It was the first priority listed on the previous slide. It also does position our step zero on the 200-day teacher scale to finally break the $50,000 mark, which is a milestone that we've been talking about, at least internally as a goal, certainly. You know, we'd love to see that get up more than that, to be in more in line with the average salary for people who graduate from college with a four-year degree, but $50,000 is a, is a milestone that would, that would feel good to achieve. And also, this recommendation does provide for better increases for staff at the top of pay scales where there is no step increase involved. Next slide, Leslie. So this just shows you all what the two, the base teacher scale looks like with the proposed action of a 5% increase. And there you can see that step zero does make it across the $50,000 mark. And then you can, you can see the impact step by step going through the scale. Next slide, Leslie, you have, we actually have to split this over two slides for you to see it. And so there you can see the top of our scale, our scales top out at step 29. After that, staff go into what's called a longevity. That goes out five years after that, but in longevity is the same for all staff. Leslie, next slide. So to summarize what the impact of this overall proposal change looks like, the net proposed expense change when the board last came together and looked at the proposed changes was 3.3 million. When you increase the cost of the salary action by 1.6, almost 1.7 million, and then you offset that by what we know of our state revenue increase at this point, then we would need to use a little over 4.9 million of our CARES money for the FY22 budget. So we have, you know, we have over 5.3 million available in CARES dollars, but as we've discussed, you know, those, those are funds that we're looking at for FY22 and FY23. So the funding that would be available to carry forward under this particular proposal is $394,124, and that would leave us with a projected request to the city for fiscal year '23 of a little over 4.5 million. However, that's sort of a worst-case scenario number because there are a lot of other things in play that we don't know yet for sure. For example, we do know that if that 5% salary action holds through the conference budget, there'll be, there will be more state revenue. So instead of $32,781 to offset the cost of these actions, that figure would go up, and it could go up, you know, I would imagine something in the range of six figures, although it certainly wouldn't come close to the one point, the 1.6 million, but it will, there would be a considerable increase of some type that should come out with the final state funding. We can't really say with any authority what the state funding for Charlottesville City Schools would look like until we get a new, it's called a CALP tool, it's something that gets published as budgets are finalized in Richmond. And one of the things that's really challenging is there's so many lines on that CALP tool, one line can go up, if other lines go down, then they offset each other, and it's, we're really looking for that bottom-line impact of all the decisions that are made in Richmond through the budget process. But there should be a net increase in state funding, assuming that 5% holds all the way through the process. The other unknown, of course, is something that we discussed in our last budget work session, which is, you know, what happens with CARES moving forward? Will there be another round of CARES funding? So there's some significant unknowns that will play into this, but this is where it stands right now with what we do know with the change of a 5% salary action. That's all I have as far as this slide. So now, these are the details of the budget changes in this proposal. Dr. Atkins, do we want to do the usual, and you'll?
Well. Thank you so much. So you can see this, the recommended changes to the original presentation is that we go from a 2% salary action to a 5% salary action, and the corresponding budgetary impacts, the total action for our teachers, support staff, the administrative staff, the nurse pay scale, and the head custodian pay scale would be $2,995,202. That would be the change in that area. I'm excited to recommend the 5% salary increase. The governor is certainly in support of the 5%, and we are hoping that in the final action of the General Assembly that that will be the outcome. It is, it is, is a goal, it has been a goal of ours for quite a long time to move our teachers' starting salary to at, at a minimum $50,000, and long-term, we'd like to see that top out at $60,000 to be more in line, in alignment with the market. So we're excited to make this recommendation to the board, and we will answer any questions that the board might have on this recommendation.
Thank you, Dr. Atkins. So next, can open it up for any questions or comments from board members.
Madam Chair, there were a couple other slides past those details in case we'd like to show those to the public. It's just a summary of all the budgeted funds and the bottom-line number.
That's fine, I'm sorry, didn't mean to jump right on there.
No, that's.
And then there are no changes to this slide, is that correct?
There's no changes here, no changes on the next one. I just thought perhaps you'd want to see that bottom-line slide, which is really just, yep, there, that one. This just shows the total budget proposal, $94,250,328, an increase of 5.3 million considering the general fund and special revenue fund changes.
So now, if there are any questions or comments from board members, Dr. Craft, why don't you start, please?
Yeah, I love this, and I love the, the 5% increase. Right now, we, that money is not assured. I mean, we're hoping that this happens. So I'm wondering, what is our contingency in case this, this does not pass? Do we, are we, we're passing this, this budget recommendation, you know, with the hope that this occurs and that the General Assembly passes this, but what, what if it doesn't? Then do we need to have a contingency figure in there in that case, for that situation?
Dr. Craft, that's a great question, and we are actually making this recommendation hoping that the state will be in alignment with our recommendation. So we have built the budget, and we are using CARES dollars in order to move this recommendation forward. So if the General Assembly makes the decision to pass the budget and to have less than a 5% salary action for SOQ positions, we would still move forward to recommend the 5% for our Charlottesville City School teachers and staff. And we built that, the budget. If the General Assembly passes the 5%, then it will reduce our dependency on the CARES dollars.
Dr. Atkins, what will be our request from the city for our budget for 21-22? What, what will, I see all the figures, but I'm probably just numbered out right now. So what will our bottom line be to request from the city of Charlottesville for our budget for 21-22?
Thank you. Ms. Hoover is getting that exact number for us now. It will be level funding, or Ms. Ms. Powell actually has the exact number. It will be level funding, the same level of funding that we received from the city council for our FY21 budget.
And that figure, Ms. Powell or Ms. Hoover, is, drumroll, please?
It's actually in the, on ESB, it's, it's in the text for the agenda item there.
Okay, thank you.
Reference dripping.
Any other questions, Ms. Perrier?
I'm good, thank you, Madam Chair.
You are welcome. Mr. Wade, do you have any questions?
Yeah, it's kind of tagging on with Leah's, um, question concerning funding from the city. We've had, seemed like at least one work session, maybe, maybe two with the city council concerning the, the budget, and usually, Dr. Atkins, you get some type of feedback from the city manager, but I know it's been a transition. Do you have any idea on, on our proposed budget with them?
And Ms. Wade, that's a great question. Right now, I know there has been several transitions happening there. Ms. Powell has been in contact with their finance department a few times. We are still awaiting any direction that they'd like to give us, and I'm sure that's going to come soon. We will be presenting to city council on Monday, so March 1st, Monday, correct, Ms. Powell?
Oh.
Ms. Torres will be presented, if, if, or it passes this budget, Ms. Torres will be presenting Monday night to city council.
So I had one quick follow-up question. It's, I don't know, I guess it's this year's budget. Let's, I mean, right now, we're proposing to go back March 8th, and, and hopefully we will have the opportunity to have all the students come back this school year, and not sure what that would look like, if it will require some type of hybrid, if, if some people can't come back. Would that require any additional funding for this year, or, you know? Or, you know, um, would you know how that would look like, you know, if we, you know, we would, I mean, we're approving the budget for next fiscal year, but um not sure if we would have to ask for something for this year?
We would be working within the, the um current budget that we have in order to bring the students back. Um, right now, we're bringing students back um and, and following the six-foot distancing mitigation recommendations from CDC and the Blue Ridge Health Department. So that limits the number of students that we can house in our buildings. So that's one of the factors that's impacting us now. Also, um, transportation uh is that, is going to be a major factor that will impact not how many students we can house in our buildings, but how many students we're going to want to be able to transport to our schools. Uh, we are currently working on summer school plans. We have several partners in the community that we are working with and hopefully um in March, we'll be able to bring some of those plans before the board to talk about what we're doing moving forward into summer school. But we are actively working on those plans. But for your question, we will operate within the current budget as we try to scale up in bringing students back into the building. The additional cost may be uh to add additional bus drivers or to contract with a third party to support transportation, whether that be for the routing or for the actual trans um drivers.
So, Dr. Atkins, if I may, uh Renee just messaged me that the figure that was published with the agenda item, she actually has a correction to that. Renee, would you, can you share the city, the correct figure, please? For the city funding that was in response to Ms. Perrier's question?
I, I apologize. Uh, I copied the wrong figure. It was prior to COVID uh last year. But our, our current figure is um fifty-eight million, seven hundred and nine thousand, six hundred and twenty-three dollars. I'm sorry.
And it would be level for next year? That's not anywhere in the presentation, but that is the correct figure.
And Ms. Torres will have that when we present to City Council.
Yes, thank you. Mr. Wade, any other comments, questions? Okay. Um, Ms. McKeever? Nope. Okay, um, Ms. Bryson Morseburger?
Uh, yeah, I just, I have a few quick questions. One was to follow up on Mr. Wade's question. And it was about if we can use, you know, you were talking about bus drivers and the shortage. Can we use some of the COVID money if we are short on bus drivers? Will we start to come back to offer some type of recruitment bonus or something um so that we could make it more enticing? Is that an option to use some of the COVID money for that if we don't have enough drivers?
Yeah, Ms. uh Bryson Morseburger, I, that's a great suggestion. The reality is they're not, we don't have drivers, even with incentives to get drivers in. We are struggling as is the entire Commonwealth nation, struggling to find drivers, even with incentives. Um, we've been looking to enter into a third-party contract to try to find drivers. That's one of the incentives that we have out there. Um, recruiting in our city for drivers. There's just a very, a shortage in the driver pool, talent pool right now.
But have we offered like an actual cash incentive for someone to stay on board for a year or anything like that?
No, we have not. The city, we've talked to city and in previous years, they've offered that, but not for this year.
Okay, and then.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead. I'm sorry.
Information on that point. So the city actually will, um, I believe they'll fund the cost of people becoming like, getting the, through the training and getting the CDL with the proper endorsement. So it's no cost to folks. And then with that, there's an expectation that they stay for a certain amount of time. So I think some things like that have already been, you know, tried before or part of the current recruiting program. It's, it's a tough puzzle to solve right now, for sure.
Okay, um, I'll, maybe I could get some more information on it. Um, and then the other question is just about the budget process in general. So we're approving the budget um on the contention that the governor is going to approve the five percent. Um, there might be additional COVID dollars, all these types of things. So if there were additional COVID dollars or something like that happened and we decide to expand summer school, we always have the option of coming back to amend this budget to add in things if we get additional funding, right?
Yes, ma'am. You always have that option, yes. And, and I would be asking you to approve it, not contingent upon um the General Assembly passing the five percent. We would want to advance the five percent regardless of the action that the General Assembly passes. If they pass the five percent, we would get additional funding. Anything above uh a two percent bonus may cause us to get additional funding uh once the entire budget is laid out.
Any other questions from you? Ms. Bryson.
I don't, I don't have a question. I just want to say thank you. I think the um salary actions reflect um the hard work. I mean, that, I mean, obviously, just a general commitment to our um staff and um, and of course, the gratitude that we have for them, especially all of the work that they've been doing over the past year. So that's all. Thank you.
I agree. Thank you. Mr. Bryant, any question, questions or comments from you, sir?
Um, first I have a comment. I just certainly, I'm really happy that um that we're going to be moving forward with a five percent raise for our teachers and staff members. Um, I think they've worked extremely hard under uh some extreme circumstances sometime. So I'm, I'm real happy about that. The governor certainly is, is pushing for this five percent raise and certainly we're in line with the governor's recommendation. But I do have one concern um in regards to if we are going to be moving in the direction of having all of our students come into the building. Next year, we're looking at February already and transportation seems to be a major will, seems to be a major barrier and perhaps will be a major barrier. How are we going to overcome that? Um, if we were to bring all the students back into the buildings and those students who need transportation to be able to get those students, you know, to and from school?
Mr. Bryant, I have to say, we don't have good answers for that right now. And we're not the only school division who's struggling with that. I think um this Bryson Morseburger um recommendation, pay incentives, um, those, those type of uh incentives certainly can attract drivers. I was talking to one of my colleagues and, and neighboring school division. Uh, and they said they put those incentives out there, they get new drivers on board and about a year later, a year and a half later, they find themselves in the same uh situation. Um, and, and I think that has been the case over years when the economy is strong or relatively strong. You put that together with COVID, I think that causes people to make different decisions about employment. Um, and then we're competing with some of our um area supermarkets um as far as hours are concerned and convenience. Um, so there's a, quite a bit of competition out there for black talent. And it does take a while to get a, a potential applicant trained and licensed to actually drive the bus. Uh, we reached out to some third-party vendors. We uh reached out to some bus companies to ask them if they would consider training drivers for us. And many of them said their, their um activity with drivers is starting to pick up now. So they are in need of drivers. All we've contacted James River Bus Line, um, they are in need of drivers also. So there's no shortage of need out there where drivers are concerned for commercial and for bus drivers.
Okay, just have to be brave.
Yeah, even as we start to open now, um, we know that we cannot accommodate all of the students who are coming back in. Uh, because of six-foot distancing, the number of drivers that we have um in, in our runs at each level, a total of about six hundred students uh we will be able to accommodate. So our transportation department is, is running those routes now to looking at how many students, which students will be accommodated on the bus. And, and we're going to ask our community to come alongside us. And if there is any way that they can arrange transportation for their student to get to school, uh, we're going to ask them to do that. Priority will absolutely be our special education students and some other categories, uh, our preschool students to get them in. And we will absolutely need our, our community to come alongside us and help with transportation.
Indeed. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments, Mr. Bryant?
No, thank you.
Okay, um, Mr. Johnson, did you have any questions or, or comments on this that you'd like to share?
No, ma'am. Thank you.
Okay, all right. Um, well, thank you for the presentation. Thank you to board members for your questions and comments. Um, I concur. I'm, I'm thrilled to see um the work and, and the commitment to offer this to our hard-working um teachers and staff. So much deserved. So thank you for putting that together. And now I would entertain um a motion for this action item from somebody, please?
Um, I move that we approve of the uh budget for twenty-one, twenty-two. Uh, the current budget with the current uh salary recommendations. That's, does that sound good enough? Is that adequate? Okay.
A second.
Answer questions from board members? Discussion? Just perusing, making a movement in anybody? All right, um, Madam Clerk, will you take? Call for a vote, please?
This is Madam Chair. Mr. Bryant?
Yes.
Ms. Bryson Morseburger?
Yes.
Dr. Kraft?
Yes.
Ms. McKeever?
Yes.
Ms. Perrier?
Yes.
Ms. Torres?
Yes.
Mr. Wade?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, there you go, Dr. Atkins.
Thank you, ma'am. And, and the stories will get that ready for you uh to present to City Council on Monday night.
Great, thank you. Um, now, we will um again offer an opportunity for comments from members of the community. Um, and as a reminder, please to state your name, address, and limit your comments to three minutes, please.
Madam Chair, we have, um, and I don't know if this person is still here and wanting to have their voice heard. It's uh, first name is C-A-L-E, last name is J-A-F-F-E. They are able to unmute it this time.
Yes, hi, this is uh Kale Jaffe. Um, my name is uh Kale Jaffe. I live on Edgewith Lane. I'm the, uh, in Charlottesville City. Uh, the parent of two Charlottesville High School students. Um, I wanted to just touch base on the funding and planning for twenty-one uh twenty-two academic year. I think it's really important uh for funding to be accompanied by a commitment uh to plan now, to announce a plan now um for in-person learning for all students across all grades, beginning day one of the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-two academic year. I think it's important that we make this commitment now because as we're hearing from tonight's meeting, it will require a significant amount of planning to get there. Uh, we will not be returning to a pre-COVID normal by August. Uh, we will have many uh adult members in the community will hopefully be vaccinated. Uh, many of the older students hopefully will be vaccinated, that's uh high school students, certainly juniors and seniors. But obviously, not everyone will be vaccinated, not the youngest children, uh based on the latest that we're hearing from uh Dr. Fauci and other national leaders. So that's the reality we need to plan for now. Use of space, uh social distancing, mask policies, all of that. As we expand uh to bringing all students across all grades back to the school, it's going to require significant effort. Uh, as the cliche goes, uh failure to plan is planning to fail. We need, uh, we're already, I fear behind in terms of getting ready for August twenty-twenty-one. I encourage you all to please make that a priority now. Um, I want to thank you for your votes in, at the last meeting uh to get many students back in school beginning on March eighth. That is wonderful. Uh, my daughters in grades nine and eleven uh this year, ten and twelve next year, they are excited about returning to Charlottesville High School uh when it is their turn to do so. And I sincerely hope it will be uh for everyone uh back in school beginning uh August twenty-twenty-one. Thank you.
There you go.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else, Mr. Como?
Emma, at this time, uh, there are no other hands raised. And I'm just confirming chat that we have that open. We we do have that open. So right now, there are no other hands raised.
Okay, we'll give it a few more seconds. All right, thank you so much. Um, and now, um, if there are comments from the board? And I am looking. Dr. Kraft, I'm just going to run through who I see here. Any comments?
Um, well, I'm, I'm really pleased that we have uh passed this budget, approved this budget. Um, I, I'm pleased and excited and I also um expressed my great appreciation for all the hard work of our staff in developing the budget, but also all the hard work of our teaching staff um and, and principals and uh in-school staff for uh all of their work this year, going above and beyond. I, I would just like to suggest that, I mean, I'm hearing, you know, some of the, the concerned comments that are coming to us uh through public comment, but also through email. And perhaps at our next board meeting, we could um talk a little more in detail about um, you know, what it actually looks like this year to, you know, to bring back as many students as we can in a safe manner. Dr. Atkins, I appreciate really hearing the detail about the transportation. That's a huge hurdle for us. Um, but I think that the more we can um explain to the community exactly where we are and um you know, how we're making our decisions, I think that will be really helpful. This is a, a tough time for everybody. And um, you know, people have been at this for now for almost an entire year. And uh, it's just really hard on everybody. So, you know, to the extent that we can, maybe next meeting, which is right before our March eighth uh return date, we could talk a little bit more about what it looks like uh for this year, you know, what's possible. And then as uh, as Mr. Jaffe was requesting, to make a clear statement about um opening for the, the coming school year. And just so the community is clear about where we are. So, and, and that, that, those are my comments.
Thank you. Ms. McKeever?
Yeah, I just wanted to follow up on that and to say, um, especially with Ms. Myrie's comment. I, I think at this stage, when we have not seen children for a year, to be able to identify, quote, struggling students is pretty hard. I think um if they are not obviously suffering um in ways that we can't um see through a screen, um, we, they, they probably are still suffering. So um, I think uh Dr. Irazari and this, you know, Dr. Atkins, I know that your plan is to bring students back on, you know, some days. I just think the more students that we can get into the building. Um, and I think those concerns that Ms. Myrie identified, especially with respect to office hours, um, are things that I, I know as a parent of high school students, I'm also concerned about. So um, I just ha, I really, you know, I think um there might be a plan, there may be a plan in the works and um but to get some input maybe from parents and/or discuss with the parents what's happening. Um, and also to kind of, I, I also agree that the um idea of uh struggling is, is like, I, I don't like to use that kind of language because I, I um, because I I think it minimizes the struggle that other students might be having who are not being invited back to school. So I don't know what the language is, um, but I I think if you are not regular, I mean, I anyway, I would just like maybe perhaps more communication with the parents. Um, and maybe some input, um, from, uh, our community about what would be is possible for, um, getting the kids to kind of be able to see each other and see their teachers, the high school and Buford. Like, I feel like Buford is really getting. Um, I I just think that's incredibly hard place because of transportation and, um, the schedule that they have, but I, those parents and those students need each other and their school just as much as high school students do. So I think, uh, I know, and I agree with Mr. Daffy that, you know, identifying a plan for next year would also be helpful. I also think it's important to note that, um, even in our comments, we have question, we have, um, conflicts, uh, that there, you know, our comments, you know, we have, we hear from all different kinds of, um, parents and all different kinds of concerns from our community. Um, and that this, these issues that the school board has been facing for a year, um, really haven't been able to develop into actionable policies until the federal government got got involved in supporting school systems and opening. Um, and I I just always want to go back to how we got here. Um, because we would have always wanted to have our students in school. Um, and I think, um, the cases going up in our community this month have been, we're we're just being affected by a lot of different things. And, um, we're doing the best we can, and I'm really grateful that we have a start date, um, for some of our students. And and, uh, you know, at least a commitment to our teachers and staff, um, regarding these raises. So I'm hopeful. And I I I appreciate all the comments just so that our school board can really understand what our parents and students are going through. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McKeever. Uh, Mr. Wade?
Thank you. Thank you. And I just wanted to tag on with, um, Jennifer was saying is that that, um, that we have a a plan to, um, we start the planning for August of twenty twenty one. It is um, my goal, I'll go to have all the students back in school then. This whole process has been exceedingly difficult. I think personally, how my daughter last year missed her in second part of her entire senior year, the the prom and normal, um, graduation is a very difficult and personal, um, decisions in in some respects. But the whole time we were making that we are continued to make decisions is what's best for safety-wise for the students and and staff, and we continue to keep that in the forefront. It may not seem like it, but um, it is. And and as we continue on, we will continue to to do that. And it is a really difficult decisions that that we're making and and I I know based on the the this, the emails and response that we're getting where half the people like what we doing, half don't, then we might be just about right as far as what we're doing and I'll and I think as Jennifer said, is that we as a school district, we we've been placed in this position to make these really difficult decisions because we're in the business of of educating. And and I know that um, the students are ready to get back. I've been, um, a few times a week, um, reading to classrooms, visiting classroom virtually. And I know that the students are are ready to come back, but the teachers are doing a phenomenal job getting the students, um, um, engaged as as much as they they can. It's it's really, um, awesome to to see that, um, the the virtual learning that that's going on. And it's it's not for everyone. We understand and we're doing what we can to address that. Um, and I, you know, I'm thankful that we're seeing the light at the end of of the tunnel. We're coming out this, and and I think that when we, this is all done. I told Rose, I said, we you know, next year, we have to have some type of of celebration, some type of big community group hug, something, because I think we really need it. I think we as a community really need it. Um, and I'm I'm thankful for this this budget and hope that we can continue to support, um, the teachers for for their hard work. And I want to thank the community um, and our community partners for stepping up to helping us, you know, do things from giving supplies to, um, food, um, wherever we have asked for assistance, the public has has stepped in. So thank you for the opportunity to speak, Madam Chair.
Um, let's see, Ms. Bryson Morseburger?
Um, yes, I just wanted to add, um, for the next school board meeting, um, next week, can we have an update on the transportation numbers? How many students? We will need, um, who we can't bring on the bus who want to come back if we could get those numbers. Um, and then the, we've been getting a lot of emails about preschool and the aftercare. Um, can we just get an update on, uh, preschool and class and why preschool isn't included with the class program and things like that? Just an update on, I just want to know where we are because I'm not absolutely up to date on all of the preschool information. Um, and then, uh, just to address one of the comments, uh, that was made just, um, on the on the record, on the public record, to say that I myself as a school board member, after our last vote to return to person versus the information that went out about how we were returning, I was confused as well. And, um, I don't know how we, you know, correct that, um, other than being publicly accountable to to just for me to say as a school board member, I don't believe what we voted on was what we actually did and that, um, maybe next time we should be clearer, do a better job, you know, but just to say that publicly that the last vote and the action after it was confusing.
Sorry, I was muted again. Thank you, uh, Ms. Perrier.
Uh. Nobody knows the trouble we've seen. This country has seen a lot of trouble. Because COVID has brought about a lot of trouble. It has affected all of us in some degree. But the community of Charlottesville City Schools has risen to the occasion. No, we haven't done everything right. No, we've made missteps. But the children and their parents and all of us that are affiliated with CCS, be it full-time or part-time, have done the best that they could do when the decisions were made. Yes, we made some decisions and things changed after. But that's the nature of the beast. Often, we leave thinking one thing and something else comes up, and we have to make quick changes. But for some reason, all of us around this table, around this screen, and within the sound of my voice, have decided that there is something good in the Charlottesville City School Division. And they've made a commitment to stand tall and hang in there and not desert the ship. It has been hard. When I was at one of my lowest points, the Walker Upper Elementary School Wolverines called and said, "Come speak to us." I was like, "Oh, my." It made my day. It made my week. It's made my month. I had to say no to another school that I'm not going to mention because I had a dental appointment. So, you know, I need my teeth. So, I had to say no. But they said, "Fear not, we'll call you again." So I am scrounging around for my favorite book so that I will be able to read it to them. And I need to give a big thank you and a big shout out to our students, to our parents, all of the people in your families that have supported you. And to all of you in the CCS School Division, whether you're full-time or part-time, you have played a part, a very important part, a very significant part. And so with all of these little parts, we have a big puzzle. And we love our puzzle. And we're going to continue to take these pieces and move them to the best of our abilities and understand that any decision we make today, tomorrow, next week, or next month, we do with our heart. And we do it with the best knowledge that we have. Because we are here to protect you. And you say, "Who's the you?" The you, you pre-K through graduating seniors. We are here to protect you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Perrier. Mr. Bryant?
I think I concur with all of my fellow board members. This has been a very challenging year for all of us. Um, so I think, I want to thank all of my fellow board members for standing tall and making the hard decisions. It has not been easy. Dr. Atkins, you have been at the forefront of leading the charge, you and your staff. I am just, as a former teacher, I know what it's like being in front of in the classroom, teaching children. And that if I got sick and couldn't be in that classroom, you know, eh, I felt weird because that's my passion, children. And, um, I have to say, the children have stepped up to the plate. Our parents have stepped up to the plate to ensure that their children are getting educated in this virtual format. Um, thank you all, staff members, the central office, for for all the changes we've had to make, huh, in the past month. But all in all, we have come through this challenge as best we can. It's not going to be easy. As a friend of mine said, "It ain't easy." So I want to thank all those administrators and teachers are unsung heroes and principals and staff members for all the work you've been doing this past year. It has been tough. But somehow, we're going to make it through. And I'm looking forward to the day that we can have all of our children safely, safely back into those buildings and teachers. So I'm hoping that we can work out this transportation issue because we got to get our kids to school. And everybody may not have transportation, but somehow it is going to work out. I have confidence in that. And I'm looking forward, and I want to thank all the community members for your emails and your comments. We're listening. And we're doing the best we can under these, um, circumstances. Um, I'm excited about the raises that our teachers are going to be getting. I remember being on the other end, you know, every year, looking, hoping that we'd get a raise, um, as a teacher. So thank you all for your hard work. Thank the board for all of your hard work, my fellow board members. It has been a challenging year, and I do agree with you, um, on, we need to have a good old celebration when it's all said and done. Because we need to exhale, I think, and the community. So it's been tough.
Thank you, Mr. Bryant. I want to thank again, uh, Dr. Atkins and your team for working on the budget, and thank you to the board members for your questions and comments surrounding the budget. Before I continue, Mr. Johnson, I'm sorry, um, did you have any questions, comments?
Uh, well, like the board is saying, um, I also want to thank all the teachers and parents, uh, who have been putting in a lot of work, um, every day. As a student, I've seen teachers and how much effort they put into lessons and, uh, just everything, looking at black boxes every day and still being encouraged to show up to class every day. Um, and being the son of a mother who works in, uh, CCS, you know, I see the, uh, dedication and everything she puts into her job as well. And, uh, I'm very happy with, uh, the pay raise as well to those, uh, faculty members because I do think that they very much, uh, deserve that. Um, so I'm very happy about that. And, uh, again, I just want to thank, um, my fellow peers as well for the, uh, work that they put in. Um, I've seen what they have done with, uh, the workload that they have been dealing with, um, throughout online schooling and uh, putting up with not seeing people on the daily, um, not having that one-on-one with teachers. Um, so I just want to thank, uh, the effort they've put in as well. Um, and thank you, um, Madam Chair for, uh, giving me the opportunity to speak. Uh, but one last thing that I do want to say though, before I forget, uh, I wanted to thank Ms. Perrier for, uh, bringing up the fact of how, um, uh, the community can rub off on the school board and show the positive light and everything. Uh, I was there for her, uh, Walker speech. And it really touched me to know how much the community meant to her. And it goes both ways, you know, it just shows the character of our, um, community. So I wanted to thank her for bringing that up. And thank you, Madam Chair, for allowing me to speak.
Thank you. And I don't think I can outdo those comments right there. Um, and again, um, you know, you just showed all of us how, um, you as a community member and a student, um, at Charlottesville High School can can rub off on us and the rest of the community. So thank you very much. Thank you, Ms. Perrier. I see you. Um, so again, I did just want to thank everybody for the work that they did around the budget. And I won't repeat all of the things that my my colleagues have said, but I do want to, um, also just put in a a special thank you, you know, to the teachers, um, who who show up every day um, and have, you know, seen their kids and have worked hard to see their kids, um, to to find a way to reach them um, and to adapt how best, um, to continue to make an impact. And just reminding all of us that that that's what this is all about, right, is seeing, seeing the kids and seeing what their their needs are and figuring out how we can continue to meet them. And and we know, and we are not forgetting, I am not forgetting how hard this transition is. As you are, you know, preparing your spaces, um, looking at, you know, which students will be in class with you, um, whether that be in person or virtually. Um, and, um, I I just want you to know that that we are sensitive to that. We know, um, that there's a lot of emotion around that, and we are here to support you, um, as is the staff. So please let us know if there's anything that we can do to continue to support you, um, teachers and staff and community members. So thank you again, everybody. Um, and I think that's all I have to say. And, um, Dr. Atkins, if you have any comments?
Thank you, Ms. Torres. Um, Mr. Johnson, thank you so much for your comments. It's so nice to hear from our students. Uh, and the way your perspective and the way you frame your comments, just such deep meaning. And it was so good to hear you talk about the impact that the positive outlook on where we are has had on you. I appreciate that. And thank you to Ms. Perrier for providing that for you. Um, so I know our community, there's a lot of information and a lot more planning that we have to do going forward. There's the summer, there's the fall, uh, opening our schools in August, transportation, there are a lot of, lot of planning that we have to do. Um, and as we get closer to opening March eighth, I want the community to know that we receive emails on both sides. We receive emails, and over the last few days, we've received a lot of emails that are very concerned about the positivity rate uh, in our community and recommending to us not to open. We heard comments tonight that that we, uh, may be irresponsible by opening. And we also hear comments. We heard comments tonight that, that we may be irresponsible by opening. And we also hear comments. From our community that they want us not only to open the pre-K through six and then targeted students for grades seven through twelve. But they'd like us to open it up even wider. So do know that we get an abundance of input. Valuable input and varying thoughts and opinions about how we should move forward and how we should open. We appreciate all of that input. And. We have said it so many times, there's no one perfect solution. I just appreciate all of the input that we get and the deliberations that we've had. And sometimes those decisions can be. At the end of the day, when a vote is taken, it can be a little muddy at the end of the day. But do know that, that we work extremely hard to provide for our teachers, to provide for our students. And to provide for our community and to wrestle with all of these issues. You see a small portion of the outcome of a lot of that wrestling here at the board meeting. But I can assure you, our teachers, our principals, our staff. Spend an enormous amount of time wrestling with these issues to present. And to bring forth the best that we can for the best interest of our students and our, our teachers and to keep them all safe. We care deeply about our students and our teachers and want to make sure. That we're providing the best decision or the best recommendation that we possibly can. And we're looking forward to March eighth. I will say again, it will be difficult. When we're opening because we're going to have some major challenges with transportation. So I would ask our families now, if you can talk with a neighbor, if you can provide transportation or partner with someone for transportation. That would help us immensely in order to be able to get our students in. We will transport as many students as we possibly can. And we will need assistance for those who will be on a waiting list, who have specifically asked to be transported to school. And we'll try to grow our capacity for transportation. Opening in the fall, it is our intent to move forward to plan for opening in the fall. For full face-to-face opening in, in the fall. However, depending on what's coming out of the governor's office and any CDC or Blue Ridge. Health District recommendations that we have to put in place will help to shape what that looks like. But our planning initially is to, from day one, the beginning of our school year, so is. Our board approves the calendar for the, the year that day one, we will fully open our schools in the fall. We are excited that many of our teachers will be getting there and teachers and staff. This week and next week will be getting their second COVID shot. So we're pretty happy about that. We try, we were very intentional this week in trying to keep activities light this week, knowing that our teachers will be getting their shots and staff. In case there are some side effects that our staff will have to deal with. And we're planning for March eighth and looking forward to March eighth. Thank you to our community. You, you have been incredibly helpful. As we've gone through this, it has been difficult for our families. And we understand that and we know that. And we are here to try to support you in every way that we can for our students. You've done an amazing job, amazing job with all of the iterations of the. Modes of delivery for instruction. And thank you so much for hanging in there with us. Thank you to our parents. We all look forward to the day that we come back together and we can be in the room with one another with, with or without the mask. Just to be in the room with one another is going to make a huge difference. Thank you to all of our staff. And to our amazing teachers for what they have done. We're still looking at legislation. About whether or not it will be required that we offer virtual learning in the fall. That's still unfolding and that will certainly, if that passes in the general assembly, impact our offerings in the fall also. Again, thank you. And we look forward to that March meeting to bring you more information. Ms. Torres, thanks so much for your leadership and thank you to all of the board.
Thank you, Dr. Atkins. Dr. King, do we have any work session wrap-up items?
Yes, Madam Chair. Discuss details of safely bringing as many students as possible in for this spring's face-to-face learning. Provide a clear statement of the plan for returning to school for the two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two school year. Provide an update on transportation numbers for our March eighth return to face-to-face. And provide an update on pre-K and class, including explanation of supports for pre-K. Other than class.
Thank you. And then as a reminder to the community, March first. The school board, I will be presenting our approved budget to city council. And then we will have our regular scheduled school board meeting on that Thursday, March fourth. And I believe that's it for now. So if there's.
Madam Chair, before you adjourn. Normally, we all gather in support of you for your presentation. Should we tune in to Channel Ten on Monday evening? How would you like us to support you since we will not be physically present?
I, I have a big couch and I've got Xs that are marked off.
Okay.
Six feet.
Okay.
Anyway, that you so choose, I, I will feel your virtual hugs and energy and support. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
We'll be there.
Thank you. All right. And with that, I call the meeting adjourned. Thank you.
Stay safe, everyone.
Thank you.
Good night, everyone.